Good evening, we're calling to order the regularly scheduled meeting of the El Segundo City Council. Today is Tuesday, May 1st. Please rise and Pastor Rob McKenna from the Bridge Church will give our invocation and Mayor Pro Tem Boiles will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Keep bow your heads with me tonight. Heavenly Father, what an exciting evening this is for our city, Lord God. Tonight, we honor those that have served our city council, Lord, with such hard work and loyalty, Lord God, and we're thankful for that. And tonight, we also are excited about the transition of bringing in new council, Lord God. Scott Nickel, Chris Pimental, Lord God. We're so thankful, Lord, for the process that you give us. And Lord, thank you tonight that we also get to honor those that serve our city. So, Lord, we look to you for wisdom, the guidance, the direction over our community, over El Segundo. Lord, we're thankful that we can come to you, that we can look to you, that you watch over us, you guard us, Lord God. Lord God, as I have an opportunity to pray over our city, often, Lord God, I'm thankful that you have given us such an amazing police department, fire department, Lord, and incredible school district, Lord God, administrators and teachers, Lord, our parks, our wrecks, our sports departments, our theater, our music, Lord, there's so many things to be thankful tonight of our city. And so, Lord, thank you that we would keep you in the middle of all that we do. Lord God, thank you that you would guide us and direct us, Lord God. Lord, watch over our city officials. Lord, in fact, your word tells us to pray for them. And so, Lord, we lift up our mayor, we lift up our council, Lord God. We ask that you would just guide them and direct them in their decision-making, Lord, not only tonight, but, Lord, in the weeks and months and years to come. So, Father, tonight, we celebrate. We look to you. We're so thankful for the gracious of you. We pray this in your son's name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Rob. And this is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice, Rob. Thank you, Pastor. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Okay, before we begin our presentations, I'm going to make a brief statement. I've been asked to address some of the confusion about yesterday's meeting, which originally included the aquatics facility agreement. For background, City Manager Greg Carpenter sent out an email to council on April 10th asking for our availability for a meeting this month. Several council members were out of town. It happens. Council members have lives, make plans. As you can see, Mayor Pro Tem Boiles was wrestling a surfboard. The good news is, he won. Yesterday was the first day everyone was available. Council has had yesterday's meeting on our calendars since April 11th. The city clerk posted the meeting agenda when all the staff reports were completed. And I'd like to ask the city manager, did any council member request the meeting yesterday?
No, Mayor. That was staff's effort to try to get some longstanding business done. We wanted to get it done in March. Things took a little longer. And as you said, yesterday was the first day we could get all of us together.
Great, thank you. So, we have a very transparent process here for meetings. And if you ever have any questions about the process or the issues, staff reports and backup documentation are always available from the city clerk's office or online. Tracy and her staff can provide you with copies of any documents you need or tell you where the links are where you can find the information. So, with that, we start this evening with the proclamation on City Clerk's Week. Whereas the Office of the Municipal Clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government exists throughout the world, and whereas the Office of the Municipal Clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas the Office of the Municipal Clerk provides the professional link between the citizens and local governing bodies and agencies of government at other levels, and whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all, and whereas the municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community, and whereas municipal clerk continually strives to improve the administration of the affairs of the Office of the Municipal Clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meeting of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations, and whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the Office of the Municipal Clerk. Now, therefore, the mayor and members of the city council do hereby proclaim May 6th through May 12th, 2018, as Municipal Clerk Week in El Segundo, and further extend appreciation to our municipal clerk, Tracy Weaver, Deputy City Clerk 2, Mona Schilling, Deputy City Clerk 1, Lily Sandoval, Patricia Harada, Records Technician, and to all municipal clerks for the vital service they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. And accepting the Municipal Clerk's Week proclamation as our City Clerk Tracy Weaver, Mona Schilling, Lily Sandoval, and Patricia Harada.
Tracy, can I be there? How dare you. All right, here we go, guys. Come on, put it.
This is why I sit over there and not up there, so I don't have to speak. But thank you on behalf of my city clerk's office. We appreciate this. And next, we have recognition of the election poll workers and election night workers for their valuable services rendered to the city of El Segundo during the April 10th, 2018 So, tonight, we are recognizing Police Department RSVPs, Joan Hobbs. You'll come forward, please. We can thank you. Carl Jacobs, is Carl here? Dino Marsucci, election night worker. And they are not here this evening, but we would like to recognize Margie Randall, Minerva Hernandez, Jackie Day, and Miriam Jonas. Election poll workers from Precinct 18, Cynthia Hooper. Janet Ingersoll. Carol Cervantes. And not attending, James Bonline. From Precinct 20, Elizabeth Wicca. Lois Moreau. And not attending, Barbara Chalekian, Anthony Kuhnha, and James Bullock. And Precinct 30, Barbara Boots. Betty Kirsch. And not attending, Leslie Evans, Elaine Belk, Monique Bolanos, and William Evans. Thank you, everyone, for your participation in our free elections.
Okay, a lot of people. Had to make it easy for me tonight. I love it. Okay, Paul, put it back there. Very good. On this side, over here. I want to see how wide this lens can go. Everybody's beautiful face. Okay, here we go, guys.
Then we have a presentation by West Basin Water District Representative and Vice President, I believe, Scott Houston.
All right. Well, good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council, to so many of our community folks who are here tonight. It's always a pleasure to be here, but also to see this room so filled, and especially in this time of transition, which comes every two years to our city. And so, first, I just want to begin by expressing, you know, as a resident, my gratitude for everyone who ran for office in this cycle. You know, to not only those who won this election, to Chris and to Scott, but also to Lance and to Maria, who, you know, put their names on ballots and went out there and walked our community. Because, as you all know, it's a very time-consuming and sometimes a thankless endeavor, and yet, it's so meaningful to all of us as residents and then to those of us who go forward in public service. So, I have to say thank you to everybody who ran. And I am here to send our regards or bring my regards from our board to the outgoing council members, both Mike Dugan and Suzanne Fuentes. And so, I do have proclamations here that are signed by all five directors of West Basin, because there's such a special relationship between the Water District and the city of El Segundo, obviously, because we have our plant right here in El Segundo, because we are your water provider to the city. So, working with our council members, the electeds, and your city staff, and our staff is tremendously important, as well as my job as one of the board members and working with you in this division means an incredible amount to me and how much I can count on this council to always be there when we need you. So, what I do want to do is to just read part of these each, because I think that they encapsulate a few things about each of you, but also sometimes things that people don't realize you're working on. So, we made sure to put those in these paragraphs. So, to Council Member Mike Dugan, I'll just read a couple of the wherethes, but whereas you were elected to the council in April of 2014, and whereas you've served as a board member also on the El Segundo Education Foundation for seven years, helping the organization grow from a small group of business and individual supporters to its position today that enjoys strong community-wide support, and whereas you also previously served as a member of El Segundo CPAC Committee, which I later served on as well, and as Chairman of the St. Anthony School Council, and you are a member, past and president, excuse me, a member, the past president of El Segundo Kiwanis Club. So, you've done a lot in this community, and we thank you for your service as well as your time on this council. And then to Mayor Fuentes, which of course, I have to also say, by the way, it's hard to believe, that you've been on this council for eight years, and most people probably realize, or not, that you and I were running against each other for an open seat on the council. So, there's a lot of history there. And yet, at the same time, we've developed a great relationship and friendship. And so, certainly, you've done a tremendous job for this city. You know, everybody knows where you stand on issues. We don't always necessarily agree on everything, but at the same time, we know that I think you've been a really good advocate and champion for this city, coming after some other mayors that were very prominent from El Segundo in our regional communities. So, I just want to read a couple paragraphs about you as well. You were first elected to a four-year term on the city council in April of 2010 and reelected in April 2014, at which time you were also elected as mayor of the city of El Segundo by your council colleagues. And whereas Suzanne has represented the city council on the South Bay Cities Council of Governments, the Los Angeles County Economic Development Corporation, and the Los Angeles Jobs Defense Council. And whereas Suzanne Fuentes retired from a major aerospace company after more than 28 years of service, where she was honored in 2008 as one of the company's Women of Achievement. And whereas Suzanne Fuentes has humbly served the city of El Segundo with distinction, steadfast commitment, and heart. So, now, therefore, be it proclaimed on this, the first day of May 2018, that the Board of Directors of West Basin Municipal Water District hereby congratulate both Suzanne Fuentes and Michael Dugan for your years of service on this city council and for your commitment to our community. So, again, I have these signed by all five directors, and it's my honor to be here to present them to you both.
Thank you, Director Houston.
Very well.
Evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, city council members. So, I'm presenting this proclamation on behalf of ICRMA's Board President, Tom Cody, and the entire ICRMA board. I say ICRMA proclamation expressing appreciation for the honorable service of Mike Dugan as a representative of the governing board for the independent city's risk management authority, ICRMA. Whereas Mike Dugan has served five years as a member of the ICRMA governing board as term, a term as treasurer and on various ICRMA committees for the city of El Segundo. Whereas Mr. Dugan is acknowledged for exceptional leadership during his tenure as a governing board member, and whereas Mr. Dugan is known for thorough meeting preparation, civil discussion of controversial issues, and supporting governing board decision-making on strategic issues. And whereas Mr. Dugan has demonstrated his ability to balance the interests of the city of El Segundo with those of the ICRMA board. And whereas the ICRMA governing board wishes to make a permanent record of its appreciation and respect for Mr. Dugan's dedication and service to ICRMA. Now, therefore, it is resolved on this first day of March 2018, that's when this was originally issued, that the members of the ICRMA governing board commend Mike Dugan for his many contributions to the organization, express gratitude for all of his efforts on their behalf. I would personally like to express my gratitude and appreciation to you, Mr. Dugan, as well, working with you on the boards. It's been a pleasure.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Fuentes and City Council Members. My name is Sherri Kramer, and I represent Continental Development Corporation, which is headquartered at 2041 Rosecrans Avenue, El Segundo. Richard Lundquist had planned to speak this evening at the city council meeting, but unfortunately, his plans changed, and he was called out of town. He asked me to read these comments that he personally prepared. I would like to commend Mayor Fuentes for the many accomplishments credited to her leadership as mayor of El Segundo these last four years, and also for her service as council member for an additional four years. Because of Suzanne's management qualities, she and the council have numerous significant achievements to take credit for all, culminating in a more vibrant and fiscally sound city. As a member of the El Segundo Economic Development Advisory Council, I have personally observed many of the successes led by Mayor Fuentes, including surpassing the goal of adding 100 new businesses to the El Segundo's, excuse me, 100 new businesses to El Segundo's high-profile roster of companies by the city's 100th anniversary. In addition, the city of El Segundo was awarded the honor of being named the most business-friendly city in the county under Suzanne's watch for a second time. Another achievement credited to Suzanne's leadership is the renaming of Subpulveta Boulevard to Pacific Coast Highway. This change in street name will enhance the marketing of the city to business prospects, will positively influence home values, and will help to increase hotel occupancy. Suzanne was instrumental in crafting an agreement with the Wiseburn Unified School District, which will result in the development of a state-of-the-art aquatic center to be shared by Wiseburn, El Segundo High School, and the city of El Segundo. Mayor Fuentes has given generously of her time to be involved in and take the leadership role in many regional conferences and organizations. As a lifetime resident of the city and longtime employee of aerospace, Mayor Fuentes has shown herself to be a true believer in the community and has demonstrated how business is an integral partner in the city's growth and prosperity. It has been a pleasure to work with you, Mayor Fuentes, and I wish you well in retirement. Lastly, I would like to thank Mike Dugan for his four years of service to the El Segundo City Council, and welcome the new council members, Scott Nickel and Chris Pimental. I look forward to getting to know them as we work together and to continue to make El Segundo a better place to live and work. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Sherri, and thank you, Richard. Are there additional presentations for Mesia?
I'll do those under the city manager's comments.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Member Prestack?
Here.
Council Member Brand?
Present.
Council Member Dugan?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Boiles?
Here.
And Mayor Fuentes?
Here. Now is the time for public communications related to city business only. Five minutes per person, 30 minutes total. If you'd like to speak, now is the time. Seeing no public communications, we will close. Council comments? Okay, procedural motion. Consideration of a motion to read all ordinances and resolutions of the agenda by title only?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, five zero. Thank you. Consent agenda? Any pulls? No, may I have a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, five zero. Thank you. No new business reports. City Manager.
So, hi sir. Busy nights at city government. We had, we have a number of city organizations that have sent flowers for Councilmember Dugan and Mayor Fuentes that I'd like to present to both of them. And I'd like to start by thanking the LA Lakers of El Segundo for sending the flowers for tonight. From the county of Los Angeles, we have commendations for both Mike Dugan and Suzanne Fuentes in recognition of dedicated service to the affairs of the community and for the civic pride demonstrated by numerous contributions for the benefit of all citizens of Los Angeles County from Janice Hahn, Supervisor of the 4th District. That's for you, Mike. Suzanne.
Thank you.
And from our neighbors to the south, the city of Manhattan Beach, the city of sun, sand, and sea. The City Council of the city of Manhattan Beach does hereby recognize Suzanne Fuentes, Councilmember and Mayor, city of El Segundo for the years 2010 through 2018.
That's very nice. Thank you.
And Mike Dugan, Councilmember from 2014 through 2018. And did we have Redondo also, Mesia? Redondo, I'm sorry, Manhattan Beach then. From the city of El Segundo for Mike, let's start with Mike. Here's your official city plaque from the city of El Segundo, presented to Michael Dugan in recognition of your dedicated service to the people of El Segundo 2014 through 2018. And because El Segundo will always be home, Mike, and you're always welcome back, we're giving you a key to the city.
Oh, very nice.
Have to find the door that this key opens. Let me know when you find it. Councilmember Michael Dugan, 2014 through 2018. So those are gifts from the city. A gift from, able to lift it? So Mike, this is from me. Over the last four years, it's been a pleasure to serve with you. Your advice to me was always completely candid, completely crystal clear, you were no confusion, never political, always about doing the right thing, always challenging me to ask the right questions, do the right thing. And my favorite, I call it Duganism, which is on this memory stone, which will go somewhere downtown, we'll figure out a location, I have a few ideas, but you might have some of your own. Mike Dugan, Councilmember, 2014 through 2018. And my favorite, Duganism, if it's worth doing, it's worth doing right. Thank you, sir. I would like to get a photo of Mike with the department heads and with the city manager's staff. If we could do that? I see the chiefs, Barbara, Randy.
Big smiles, happy.
One more while you're up there. While you're up there. One more, one more, one more. Okay. Saying different, I'm saying here. All big wonderful smiles. Okay. Thank you.
I can't reach that far.
All right, and for Suzanne, here is your official city of El Segundo plaque, presented to Suzanne Fuentes in recognition of your dedicated service to the people of El Segundo, Councilmember 2010 through 2014, and mayor from 2014 through 2018.
Thank you.
And your key to the city. You'll use yours maybe differently than Mike, who's going to use his. I did, a gift from me, again, thank you for your years of service, for your time as mayor, for your, I guess relentless dedication to the city. The mayor made what is supposed to be a part-time job into more than a full-time job, including overtime, nights, weekends, whenever we needed the mayor, she was here to help us out. Thank you for your advice and your mentorship for me and for our department heads. And I have purchased for you a stone that goes in the mayor's walk, which is out in front of police station. And it is the, it's mayor of the city of El Segundo Suzanne Fuentes from 2014, 2018.
Thank you Greg.
And Mayor, if you could take a picture with the department heads and I?
I would love to, yes. And the city attorney.
City Attorney.
Hey, you don't look like Suzanne.
All right guys, let's see, let's see what I can do. Oh, no, no, you guys look fantastic. That's all, just stand, stand there and look fantastic, that's all you gotta do. One, two, and three, and more fantastic, one more fantastic. Okay. All right, ready? Files? Fantastic.
Okay. All right, so. Reports, City Attorney.
Yes, Mayor and Councilmember Dugan, I just want to say it's been an extreme honor to serve while you've served at mayor and council member. And I'll always remember the years that I've worked for you and thank you very much.
Reports, City Council Members.
I just want to take a moment and thank both Councilman Dugan and Mayor Fuentes. I think, you know, Scott, or Scott, you did an incredible job recapping their careers and their contributions to the city. Thank you for that. I would just add that Mike was the consummate advocate for risk management, really protecting the assets of the city, looking out for future generations, not just serving on that committee that Joe Lilio commended him for, but in all regards. So we should be thankful for that. Thank you, Mike. He's also a man of just sound governance, questioning things, is this really the right way that we should be, it's just the best way essentially. And he has a knack for being financially savvy and prudent. So I just want to thank Mike, you, Mike, for everything you've done and I look forward to seeing where that stone ends up on the sidewalk. Which one? I'm placing bets, a dollar bet like we used to do. And then I want to thank Mayor Fuentes, she has been, Suzanne's been an absolute champion for aerospace and the military. As a veteran, I appreciate that very much and it's instrumental to the success of the South Bay. And she's been an absolute perfect figurehead for the city with our different stakeholders in the region. So thank you for your service.
Thank you Drew.
Mike, I'd like to thank you. I've enjoyed working with you the last couple of years. I enjoy your love of sports, some of them, and your sense of humor and really appreciate your service to the city. You're free now to go find out what that key will open. And it looks like you've got a pretty nice trivet there that you can put something on that you like. So it's been fun and I wish you the best going forward with your, with your life. And Suzanne, you've like given it all up for this city. You know, you've always been there for most every event that I know of. You downsized where you lived, you retired from your job, all to focus time and effort and your skill set on this city. And it just seems, I was here when you came in, in 2010, and I'm hard to believe that you're going out tonight. It's been a great working with you and I know that you've loved the work and have left a legacy here to the people of El Segundo and those yet born to make this city just as good as it possibly can be. And you did it. So thank you from the bottom of my heart for your service.
Thank you Dr. Bran.
So I just want to say thank you again and I concur with both Dawn and Drew on their sentiments about Suzanne and Mike. Mike, you really taught me a lot about, you know, how the city operates and ensuring that we, we look forward and look at things from a fiscal perspective and thank you for that. I'll always treasure those moments where, in closed sessions where we had discussions and you really stood your ground and I really respect you and thank you for all your efforts for the city. And Suzanne, I want to thank you for everything you've done for me. You know, you've been a great supporter and thank you for really pushing us to celebrate our centennial. You know, you are really the centennial mayor and, you know, your efforts and guidance leading the city has been amazing. So thank you very much.
Mike? Richard, yes.
What do you say, right? I think, first of all, it's your fault, you elected me, so you gotta blame yourselves, don't be blaming me. But I, you know, I really am grateful for the opportunity to serve. I think it's a, you know, there's a lot of issues and things that are really touching all the aspects of life in El Segundo. When you look at it, you know, the constitution was set up that the people have the power. It's not the businesses, it's the people. And the people elect the officials and the officials should be representing the people. And I always kept that dear to heart. I think the most important thing is to represent the residents of the community because that's really where the power resides and that's where it should. So I always tried to put on my hat that said, what's the best thing for the residents of the city in any decision I ever made? And I would encourage all, you know, all council members and new council members to do the same. People ask me, am I going to be happy or sad? And I said, you know, it's kind of like buying a boat, you know? The two happiest days of the life of your life are the day you buy it, the day you sell it, kind of the thing. So I'm not sure how that goes, but I'm looking forward to trying retirement again this time. You know, I'll get it right this time, I'm pretty sure. But Marcy also retired, my wife, and we finally get an opportunity here to travel a little bit. So hopefully we get a little bit of a chance to be more road travelers. There's so many things we haven't seen in the United States that it's time to go see it. So I'm looking forward to that. I've enjoyed my service here. I hope, you know, you've placed your trust in me and I hope I've represented you well and I thoroughly thank you all. Again, I hope I served you well and I wish you all the best of success and I think you've selected two great new council members. So I'm really looking forward to them joining the dais up here and taking over. And I did my part, you know? By me leaving, they can come in here and look really smart. So it's really, I did my part to make them look good. So I thank you all very much and really, God bless you all. Thank you.
Thank you El Segundo. I have been blessed beyond measure. Through the grace of God, I was born in a wonderful country, raised and educated in this beautiful city, and thanks to you, been privileged to serve on city council. And to give some perspective, my smart darling nephew Ethan in the front row was born the day after I took my oath and he turned eight two weeks ago. I've had the pleasure of serving with colleagues who cared deeply about our city. We each brought our own perspective and strive to make our city better than when we were elected, and it is. As councils, we've shared grief and joy, parents dying, children and grandchildren born, we've been there for each other. Each council has its own personality and I'm grateful to end my career with this smart, thoughtful council. Dawn, Mike, Drew, Carol, thank you. And a special thank you to two extraordinary El Segundo public servants and role models, Carl Jacobson and Dawn Bran. It wasn't easy. Eight years ago, when Mayor Kelly McDowell stepped down, he said the new council was facing bigger financial challenges than he'd ever seen in his 12-year tenure. He was correct. When I became mayor four years ago, I committed to structurally balancing our budget. We dug in, we made tough decisions, and we did it. Thank you councils. Council doesn't do it alone. Greg Carpenter, the city manager, loves our hometown and is available 24/7 to make it a better city. Mark Kensley, city attorney, provides thoughtful legal advice to council and staff. I'm grateful to both of you. Thank you to our department managers. Greg has assembled an A-team to lead our employees. A city exists for one purpose and one purpose only, to provide services, and our employees make El Segundo the gem of the South Bay. Thank you. And a special thank you to Mesia and Mickey for your support. I've had unbelievable opportunities for the past eight years, testifying before the California Redistricting Commission, meeting with the governor's education staff to secure SCROCK funding, supporting Los Angeles Air Force Base and becoming an I've had unbelievable opportunities for the past eight years. Testifying before the California redistricting commission, meeting with the governor's education staff to secure SCROC funding, supporting Los Angeles Air Force Base and becoming an honorary commander, breaking ground on the Los Angeles Lakers Training Center, winning LA, winning LAEDC's most business-friendly city for the second time, traveling on a diplomatic trade mission to China, and being our city's centennial mayor, which holds special significance to me as a lifelong El Segunden. I've been blessed with loving friends who provided support, encouragement, and humor. Lots of humor. Thank you. A special thank you to my family. Ted, Stina, Jimmy, Bella, Zoe, Matthew, Noah, Ethan, Calista, and Kim. I love you. I wish my mom Suzanne Weston was here to celebrate with us. She passed away shortly after I was elected in 2010. I miss her every day and try to make her proud every day. So I'm really excited for our city with our new council. Congratulations, Chris and Scott. You're joining a great group of people up here. I know you will continue to build on our work and make El Segundo stronger. God bless.
Reports, city clerk.
Consideration of possible action, adopting a proposed resolution declaring the results of the general municipal election held on April 10th, 2018. Are you gonna read the resolution by title or you would like me to?
Mayor and council, a resolution declaring the results of the general municipal election held April 10th, 2018 is ready for adoption.
So move.
I'll second it.
In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Five zero. And with that, Mr. Dugan and I will leave the dais.
So at this time, Chris Pimentel and Scott Nichol will take their oath, and Chris, you're up first. So raise your right hand and you're gonna repeat after me. I, Chris Pimentel, do solemnly swear or affirm...
I, Chris Pimentel, do solemnly swear or affirm...
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of California...
And the Constitution of California...
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic...
Against all enemies, foreign, domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance...
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the State of California...
To the Constitution of the State of California.
And that I take this obligation freely without mental reservation...
That I take this obligation freely without mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion...
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
That I will well and faithfully discharge the duties of which I'm about to enter.
You are now sworn in. Alright, Scott, you're up.
You can sit wherever you want.
You've done this before.
I have not done this before.
Have when you become planning commissioner. Okay, ready? I, Scott Nichol, do solemnly swear or affirm...
I, Scott Nichol, do solemnly swear or affirm...
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of California...
Constitution of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic...
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance...
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the State of California...
To the Constitution of the State of California.
And that I take this obligation freely...
That I take this obligation freely.
Without mental reservation...
Without mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion...
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
I will... And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Anyone else sworn in?
Thank you.
Ready, set, smiles? Ayes? Thank you.
Okay, so item number five. Consideration of possible action regarding election, election of mayor and mayor pro tem by seated council members. Just a few things. You are able to nominate yourself and you may vote for yourself. No confusion. And if anyone wants to say anything before they begin the process, please do. Okay. Okay, hold on. This is where I have to like get my hat on. Alright, we're, we are now currently open for nominations.
I would like to nominate Drew Boils. For mayor.
For weird look, for weird-looking guy this evening?
Do I have any other nominations? Alright, so we need a motion to, uh, vote.
And let, make, make a motion to vote or to nominate Drew Boils as mayor.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
I'd like, thank you. I'd like to move that Carol Perstig. The mayor pro tem.
Oh, you can do that now. You're right.
Thank you.
Okay, sorry.
Uh, take, you need to take a nomination, mayor?
We do have to have a nomination.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, we're gonna open it up for nominations for mayor pro tem.
I'd like to nominate Carol Perstig.
Thank you. Okay, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Dawn? Okay, thank you. Alright, uh, let's see. Report, city treasurer. Okay. Alright, at this time, we'll open up for public communications. Just step on up to the mic, don't be bashful.
Congratulations, Drew.
Thanks, Chad. Thank you. Um, report, city attorney.
Oh, can I? It's a public communication.
Oh, public communication. Yes, please state your name and your address.
Hi, Mike Robbins. We don't need to state our address. Everyone, I think knows how to reach me. I'm former El Segundo city councilman. Anyway, I'd like to congratulate the newly elected council members, Chris Pimentel and then also Scott Nichol. So anyway, congratulations, welcome. On the oath you took tonight is really, really important. It was so important to me when I took that oath to defend our constitution against all enemies, foreign and domestic. Domestic enemies can be just as dangerous as foreign enemies, as we know throughout the Cold War and even leading up to today. And to defend the constitution means not, it's not an a la carte menu. We don't pick and choose which parts of the Bill of Rights or which parts of the constitution that we'll defend. We have to defend the entire constitution. If anyone wants to change it, Article 5 says how to amend it, and the founders made it intentionally very difficult, but possible to amend the constitution. Article 5 means, for example, although this does not apply to El Segundo, that unelected appointed-for-life judges cannot just simply reinterpret the constitution to mean things different than what the plain language and historical contexts indicate. It also means no legislating from the White House as well as from the courthouse. At the city council level, even though you're not federal or state government, you still have a very important duty to do your best, as well as doing the regular city business, to look at every item of city business and ask yourself, does this in any way violate anyone's constitutionally protected rights? And there are rights in the Bill of Rights that are not given to us by the constitution. As the founders explained in our Declaration of Independence, one of the most important, probably the most important founding document, we have God-given natural rights. They're not given by man and cannot be taken away by any person or group of people. That these are inalienable rights endowed upon us by our creator. And those are in the First Amendment, they're in the Second Amendment, and in other amendments. So always remember that. The constitution does not give us any of those rights. It recognizes pre-existing natural rights we are born with, that are God-given rights, meaning no legislators, no people can rightfully and legitimately take those away. If they ever do take them away, it's the people's duty to take them back again. So I'm confident you all will do your best to defend the constitution against all enemies, foreign and domestic. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comments? Okay, Ron, if you could state your full name, please.
Ron Swanson. 629 California and own a business here in town. I want to congratulate the newly elected candidates. Now, council persons. Um, Mr. Mayor, congratulations. Adam Mayor Protem, congratulations. And Chris, congratulations. Amazing story, you young man. That's just amazing story, what, what you guys all accomplished. What was nice about this election? We didn't hear much, other than everybody going door-to-door. It was so nice to do that. But now's the time to step back, take a full breath of fresh air. And I, not only the council, the community, the staff, everybody's gonna roll their sleeves up, we're gonna push back to the table, and we're gonna work really hard at rebuilding and getting our community where it's at. There's a saying out there, somebody else uses it. We're gonna make El Segundo great again. Thank you.
Any further public communications? If you could please state your name and your address.
Chad Zidenic. 2270 Baltar Street. Sorry, I should have done this the right way. I didn't realize it's my first meeting when I got excited that Drew was elected. So, just a few comments, um, that I've born and raised in LA my whole life, 42 years, and I know Drew very well. We sit on the same business organization. And I want, just wanted to say that from my standpoint, knowing him as well as I do, that city of El Segundo is very, very fortunate to have someone like him in this sort of leadership role. I've seen what he's done for his family. I've seen what he's done for business. I've seen what he's done for the city. And I think the, uh, the whole country would be in a lot better place if we had more people like Drew. So, good luck, Drew, and thanks for everything.
Okay, seeing no further comments, that concludes our meeting. We'll adjourn at 20:02.